Good evening and welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing and Land Development Code Text Amendment Public Hearing. We will first take up the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the transmittal to the state of text amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. For the text amendments that are being heard for transmittal, a second public hearing will be scheduled for the Board's consideration of the adoption of these amendments. The Board will also consider the final adoption of text amendments to the Comprehensive Plan this evening. Before I pass things over to the Planning Commission, I want to say that Commissioner Kemp will be participating virtually this evening. So with that, I'll pass things over to Melissa.
Good evening, Commissioners. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission. Our first item tonight is Amendment HCCPA 2324, which is Goal Four of the Future Land Use Element, and it will be presented for transmittal.
Good evening, Jay Collins, Planning Commission staff. Staff is here tonight to provide for you a transmittal hearing for unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Future Land Use Section update for Goal Four. This is HCCPA 2324. Again, this is a continued hearing, transmittal hearing from the March 7th date. Goal Four is development. What we're going to do tonight is we're going to go through what are the changes that have occurred in the policy since that March 7th draft that was provided to you? Those changes are centered around the commercial locational criteria for unincorporated Hillsborough County within the urban and rural service areas. So I'm going to highlight some of those for us now. Again, it removed the context classification map and added the functional classification map. Again, that is the foundation for the CLC. Where are those intersections? Those intersections are then found off of the functional classification map. Added language of the livable communities element shall prevail if there are any conflicts. Those conflicts are within other policies of the Comprehensive Plan. Set a maximum .25 FAR for retail and commercial in the industrial future land use categories to preserve industrial lands. So again, other types of uses in industrial, it sets a high mark for those. Urban service area will allow for a maximum FAR, that's the flu category, a maximum FAR within 1,000-foot standard distance of qualifying intersection. So it allows for consideration of higher intensities to reach the FAR, that's 4.25, at those intersections. 50% frontage requirement on a roadway with a context classification of suburban, commercial, urban town, or urban general. And continuing through, again, with the urban service area, it's looking at meeting, or excuse me, isolated parcels of five acres or less that are unsuitable for residential development. That unsuitability could be that there are ELAP properties around them, wetland properties around them, and so it's basically an island unto itself. 5,000-square-footed intersections of an arterial collector in a major local roadway, again, that is within the urban service area. Those areas in the rural area, it's primarily a simplification and restructuring of the rural classification, but it includes the limitations based on the number of lanes off of that context classification. So think of it, two plus two, two to fours, four to fours. And again, it is a merging of the rural residential and the rural agricultural to simplify the status of it. Separate urban and rural area design standards, again, what you would find in the rural area and in the urban areas are different in design and should be. And based in existing language from the community design, that is based on existing community design component language. So those are the changes that we have from the March 7th. But again, Goal Four, there's a lot of different things that you'll find there for development. Again, there's mixed-use policies, land use suitability, neighborhood and community-serving uses, infill, commercial redevelopment, housing options, energy industrial park. I'd like to touch on it, that the energy industrial park has a land use category. Its policy is found there. This is a restructuring and renumbering of it. It's not a change of the policy for energy industrial park because, as you know, there are privately initiated text amendments right now for the energy industrial park. I just want to make sure that that is clear for those folks from the public who may be watching this. Electrical power generation facilities as well as telecommunication facilities. So consistency review, again, the proposed revisions, proposal revisions since March 7th, proposal revisions that we had at that March 7th are consistent with the following goals, objectives, and policies. Urban service area policies about driving 80% of the growth within the urban service area. Tools for implementation, again, there's a lot of work here within development, so they must work in concert with one another as well as the land development code. Growth management, basically, this is an overview of growth management is the Goal Four. And because there is, basically, you're touching on all parts of unincorporated Hillsborough County within development, whether it's the coastal high hazard area, whether it's rural areas, whether it's some environmental, it makes total sense to have some consistency findings within some of the management of natural resources as well as to promote connectivity between these parcels and these uses. With that, the recommendation from the Planning Commission is to find the proposed text amendment HCCPA 2324 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. I thank you for your time, and this concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, and I've got two individuals that have signed up virtually. Is there Nancy Pataraki?
Nancy, can you hear us? Yes, we can hear you, but you're low. You might need to speak up.
Okay. Nancy Pataraki, 181 situation, Highway 11. Once zoning requests are made, rural property owners within 500 feet are notified and wired, and that's because of potential land use changes likely have immediate impact on their daily life. Once notified, these neighbors are expected to research the zoning request and determine what impact it can have on them and their neighbors, what actions they can take, how to oppose zoning change. The time for receiving the notification and taking action.
Can IT fix this? What's... Hold on, hold on, Ms. Pataraki.
Nancy, thank you. This is Communications. We still can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
Now we can hear you fine.
But then you went out.
Okay, shall I start from the beginning?
No, no. Go back 30 seconds.
Okay, so the first addition is to add 300 feet from the property line where residential occupancy exists. And that's basically because we do notify the neighbors within 500 feet because it does greatly impact their life. And beyond that point, they still have to do a lot of research to determine what impact it's going to have on their life, and sometimes we only have 30 days to do so. Additionally, those who are outside the 500 feet, they don't have any notification per day. They have to look for roadside signs. Now, the second addition I'm requesting is under land use suitability. It would be a new entry, 4.3.13, and it would prohibit any property engaged in commercial activity to have access to a private lake directly or to the purchase of a property easement where residential properties are heated out into the body of the lake. Now, the reason for this is the maintenance of the quality of the lake, tributaries, streams, and rivers associated with wetlands as well, and personal and property safety on the water and private land.
Nancy, I apologize. You just went low again. Your audio's low again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Individual, I'm almost done. Individual residential property owner is heated out into a private lake should receive the same property protection, safety consideration, and right to privacy as any lakefront residential property owner in this subdivision. We saw last month the county approved a 12,000-square facility on a property with direct access to two lakes in a budding multiple residential neighborhood. This approval was not consistent or compatible with the surrounding areas. These two proposed additions would enhance the protection of rural residential neighborhoods from the intrusion of commercial activity into their home life, backyard, in life, while providing more ecological safety.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments, and I want to make sure staff has a thorough understanding of all of the suggestions that Ms. Pataraki made. I think even if we could have understood or heard everything that she said, they seem to be quite detailed, so I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to consider them. Not, probably not tonight, but when it comes back for an adoption hearing.
Commissioner, I'd just note that Ms. Pataraki did send an email with those, so we do have those documented, and we're aware of what it was.
Okay, that'll be very helpful. Okay, Susan Swift, are you on the line?
Yes.
Good evening.
Thank you. Shall I go ahead?
Yes, ma'am.
I really am speaking to just two areas in this section. One is the mixed-use land use categories policy, mainly it's policy 4.2.1. And I guess my general comment on this and the locational criteria, which is the other topic that I'll highlight, that is, this is still... Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. My overall comment is that these are still a bit detailed for a comprehensive plan. And given the diversity of uses and development in this county, I think some of the things like this policy 4.2.1, where we're getting into 10% of things and mixing uses to the nth degree, these should really not be in the comprehensive plan but be more in the land development code and applied through there. Some of, it's unclear what the objective is for this policy and some of the subpolicies within this, and I think it's much too detailed for a comprehensive plan. And perhaps the solution is if someone makes a map of what we're trying to achieve and what those arterials and collectors are that we're trying to protect and the remaining lands on them that are not already commercial, then maybe we need a new category or two to address that rather than getting into 10% of this land area, which should be X or Y. And then my similar comments are on the locational criteria. I think it's fantastic that you're now going to use the functional class map that will resolve so many problems and be much easier to use and administer, I'm sure, for both sides. My only other general comment is also, it's got too many layers in the locational criteria. It's got the distance from the corner, and it's got the frontage percentage and another percentage, and there seems to me that it should just be one measure and not multiple layers. If there are other things that need to be regulated, then that should be in the regulations.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. I'd like to have, again, with this speaker as well, if staff could review the suggestions for both of them and present their findings so we can consider potentially making changes prior to the adoption hearing. Those are the only two that had signed up. Is anyone here that wants to speak to this item?
Good evening, Commissioners. Todd Josko, on behalf of NAOP Tampa Bay, which is the region's Commercial Real Estate Trade Association. I had sent a letter to the Board on behalf of NAOP expressing some specific concerns about the commercial location criteria. Please know that these concerns are all applicable to just the urban service area. We haven't weighed in on the rural area. We spoke about commercial location criteria last year and just questioned the need for these criteria. It just, I think we agreed to disagree. We've worked a lot since then with Melissa and her team. She's always very amenable to listening to us, so we appreciate that. And I think we're really down to about three things that we just philosophically don't agree with. In Section 4.75, and I have copies of these I can give to you, that speak to design standards, it doesn't seem appropriate to have specific design criteria in the comp plan. There's already compatibility requirements through the location criteria, and that is just kind of a one-size-fits-all language that's hard to unwind once it's in the comp plan. Similarly, 4.74 is also very... It also speaks to building design, and it's pretty subjective language. And then in 4.73, the limitations of acreage for commercial property are a little too restrictive. It just excludes a lot of commercial uses that could be fit and that there's, you know, there's very few parcels left that would fit in as criteria. Understand, you know, again, the Board's desire to have more walkability, but the commercial location criteria in the urban area, it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense on a lot of reasons. So we would ask that the Board consider these changes and either, you know, at your discretion to consider these changes tonight, or if this item were to get transmitted, we would still ask for some time to kind of continue to work through these processes before it comes up for final adoption. So thank you for your consideration. Did send this an email, but happy to submit a copy for the record if that makes it easier to consider.
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Josko. Commissioner Winstall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to bring this topic up, I think, in two more goals, but particularly Commissioner Cohen, your district, Commissioner Myers, but we have a real issue growing with what's called accessory dwelling units in Hillsborough County. And I wasn't opposed to the idea of allowing one accessory dwelling unit for a family member or something, which is what our Comprehensive Plan and multiple other documents support. However, from the sheriff and from code enforcement and from county staff, we can't enforce it. So we've promoted a problem that we can't enforce, and it's grown far beyond one dwelling unit or how that's perceived, and it's turned into some situations that have become physically violent for members of our community. Harassment, destruction of property, threats on people's private businesses, destruction of swimming pool equipment, one attempt that I know about to burn down someone's house over it. All things that get met with, well, even if it is supposed to be a family member that's in there, the sheriff's position is, well, we can't make them, like, require proof of familial relation. We can't impede their personal private property and walk around the backyard. We need to be invited in. It's a bunch of different elements. Code enforcement has tried to be creative, but it's really difficult for them, and we have multiple elements of our Comprehensive Plan that promote this, and I just don't believe that since we have no ability to enforce something, we shouldn't be promoting it because we can't keep it in line with what we've originally been going after. So, Mr. Gorman, you said that they don't need to be removed today since we're receiving a lot of other comments for suggestions. They can be removed once it's transmitted. They can just be removed at the adoption hearing?
Certainly, along with the other elements raised, this is something that could be evaluated between now and the adoption hearing. There'll be another opportunity to act on any of these amendments, any changes the Board would like to make at the adoption hearing.
Then, I mean, it's been you and Mrs. Zornita that's compiled them for me, but then, since I'll only have to speak once to it, it's going to be one element from Goal Four, another element from Goal Six, and two elements from Goal One, which all, which seem to be all of them that promote something. I mean, it's, these are not exaggerations. These folks are coming to me at my town hall showing me their text messages. It's gone real beyond the pale. Most of them are senior citizens that seem to be being harassed, that live in those communities for decades. So those are the three goals and objectives that I will be hoping to have more meaningful conversation at the adoption hearings to remove any further promotion of this, which has gotten completely out of hand since not even the sheriffs can enforce it for us evidently.
Yeah, and Adam, if we can just compile a list of these issues or concerns from the public and from board members, and we can, I think it's the cleanest, staff recommends the cleanest way is to do it at the adoption hearing, do it all at one time, so if we can just be prepared to...
We can make the changes as directed and bring back that at the adoption hearing.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. I was going to suggest the same thing, that we got some very good suggestions from the public and from the commercial real estate community today, and if we can compile all of the issues that were raised, we can transmit and then bring it back, and I think we can always take out... Listen, the issue that you bring up is very, very serious, and there is no question that it's a huge strain. I hear it all the time. I hear a lot about unpermitted, you know, individual breaking up of single-family homes into multiple units, and the sheriff and code enforcement really having their hands tied in terms of their ability to actually have any access to what's actually going on. And I think we even asked the county attorney recently if there was anything we could do to strengthen our ordinances to help them, and there really wasn't. So I think a scrubbing of all of our Comprehensive Plan to see that we're not encouraging something that we're trying to get control over is a good idea. I think, though, that we have a much bigger, sort of broader, problem, and if we're going to tackle it, I think the Comprehensive Plan thing we ought to do, but we really, in a regular meeting, ought to have a real discussion with staff about how we can get control of this. Some of it is just the prohibitions of state and federal law, and I can tell you, based on when I was in the Tampa City Council, it's a rampant problem in the city as well. It is something that is totally running rampant, and that, and it happens in plain sight. It's always, you know, a single-family house that has 12 cars parked in front of it and six electrical, you know, outlets all sort of feeding into different areas. So I think it's a very, very well-taken point.
Okay, excellent comments. Can we have a motion?
I'll move to transmit.
Second motion, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Winstall. Any other comments? Please accord your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, next item.
Thank you. The next item is Goal Six, which will be presented by Andrea Papendrew.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andrea Papendrew, Planning Commission staff. This is the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Section Update, Goal Six, also known as HCCPA 23-26. This is also continued from the March 7th transmittal. So this is a publicly initiated text amendment. Two policies are proposed to move to the public schools element of the county's comp plan, and this has not changed since the March transmittal. Changes since March 7th are on the screen before you. The first being that all of the proposed lead policies for Goals Two, Four, and Six are included within the Goal Six packet. Based on the Board direction at the March public hearing, staff streamlined and removed duplicative policy language, which includes some of those specific requirement language that was already in the land development code. And for context, Goal Six went from 10 objectives and 70 policies in March to seven objectives and 38 policies. So another major change to this goal from March is that the existing urban and suburban category was split into two separate sections. The rural pattern characteristic section remains and had minimal edits, mostly with language being simplified. The access management section was renamed as circulation based on the policy language that applies to multiple modes of travel. There is a new policy in this section on roadway landscaping considerations and use of Florida-friendly landscaping. However, while this shows in the packet as new language, it was a product of streamlining this goal and a combination of other concepts already in the plan. And then the existing crime prevention through environmental design section was simplified and placed at the end of the goal. So county staff did have an opportunity back in May of 2024 to review the proposed languages, and staff made edits based on those comments. The proposed revisions are consistent with the following goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. The proposed urban, suburban, and rural pattern design policies are consistent with existing future land use sections on the urban service area, rural area, neighborhood, community development, and community planning. It is also consistent with several mobility section policies on prioritizing the safety of all users, providing context-sensitive and complete street guidelines, building a comprehensive bike and pedestrian system, and providing interconnectivity and access management. Planning Commission found the proposed text amendment HCCPA 23-26 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Who do you want to like to speak to this item? Good evening.
Good evening. Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson this evening. I spoke against this goal last time. It really, it's called the built environment, so it kind of just tells you it's trying to address building and site development, right? Land development code regulations, crime prevention, those types of things, sidewalks, design standards. And in my conversations with Melissa, and I appreciate the work that they did do, she's indicated that these policies are not used for a finding of consistency, right? And they're just there to be informative, and, you know, we argued back and forth. If they're not there for consistency purposes, why are in the Comprehensive Plan at all? They really don't need to be there. So we really think this goal can...
Planning Commission found the proposed text amendment, HCCPA 23-26, consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Now, this is a public hearing. What do you want to like to speak to this item? Good evening.
Good evening. Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson this evening. I spoke against this goal last time. It really, it's called the built environment, so it kind of just tells you it's trying to address building and site development, right? Land Development Code regulations, crime prevention, those types of things, sidewalks, design standards. And in my conversations with Melissa, and I appreciate the work that they did do, she's indicated that these policies are not used for a finding of consistency, right? And they're just there to be informative. And, you know, we argued back and forth. If they're not there for consistency purposes, why are in the comprehensive plan at all? They really don't need to be there. So we really think this goal can be removed because many of the policies, if not all of the policies, are covered either elsewhere in your land development code or your comprehensive plan.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this item? Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller. I'll, you've got a long agenda tonight, so I'll just echo Kami's comments. I think that everything in this element is found either elsewhere in your comp plan or LDC, and Wallstaff has trimmed it down. It's really just not needed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to speak to the item? Commissioner Wollstall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I probably should have said it earlier, especially since we have a new commissioner, but these items weren't really continued. They just, these require a supermajority, and they couldn't get the votes. One of the no votes was Commissioner Owen, myself, Commissioner Sopeda, I can't remember who else. But on this one, a lot of the things that were said, which I think still do exist, which is why I will not be, I don't, I don't think that it's needed for many of the reasons that were stated previously, and also because of the commentary that we received during the meeting from staff, which was, well, even though they're, they're in there, which is some of the crime things that were mentioned, we wouldn't use them. And I just, I think that that's, I think that that's bad government to say, well, it's in there, we know we're not going to use it, but somebody in 10 years might use it, and they might use it in a way that we didn't want, and we accidentally created that scenario. And then the other reason I won't support extra steps in here is because I've mentioned this many times before in past meetings, is the letters that we receive from people that say that our policies are now rivaling that, I'll say it again, of even Broward Counties, which is, is really saying something. And, you know, they, first, they've got this comprehensive plan they got to get through, then, then they've got a regular land development code, then we have 27 or 28 different community plans, which add a different variable. And then we also added some special WVR2s and RP2s. And it's just this whole sweeping scenario of invisible taxes that get added on to developments, right? Because it creates extraordinary amounts of work to get it across the finish line. It creates more time from council, all costs that, as we know, get passed on eventually to the end consumer. So if there's a way for us to reduce and clean it up and make it at least a little bit more simple going forward. And, you know, we hear, we hear the term affordable housing gets said a lot, and the way that we can make home affordability better in Hillsborough County is removing as many unnecessary obstacles as possible. So I, again, I didn't support it before. I just, Mr. Chair, maybe if you could clean this up, I was actually confused last time. It failed the votes. So, but tonight, if it fails transmittal, then does it just die?
I believe so. My memory is correct. It was, it was three to three when it failed. And then I believe Melissa wanted it, I guess, all of them to come back at one time, if I remember correctly. Please.
Sure. Yes, at that time, I requested it be continued for us to continue working on it and appreciate the board giving us that opportunity. If it is the board's direction not to transmit what is the new text of Goal Six, there are a number of things in this package that are being deleted. As Andrea mentioned, there are policies at the end of it that are being deleted. We do think that that's a bunch of stuff that is cleaning up and streamlining stuff from the plan. So if it is possible, if it's the board's decision not to, if you could transmit those deleted policies, that would be helpful tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Wollstall?
Yeah, yeah, didn't, I mean, I don't believe that we should have Objective Six, so I'm, I guess voting to transmit any of it, I won't get there, for all the other reasons I stated.
All right, Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. Question is to Melissa. Hearing from Kami and Jake saying that the, the comments are covered elsewhere in the document, can they be removed completely? Since we know that they're in other places of the document, so that we can transmit?
Yes.
I'd like to hear from you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. If it is, if it's the board's decision, I don't think that there will be anything absent from the plan by not transmitting the proposed new text of Goal Six. What, if you don't, but then there's a whole bunch of deleted policies that start on page 33 of the agenda packet that if, that we do need to transmit so that they get deleted from the plan. So that, that's kind of a cleanup piece of this that was a part of this item.
But the items that they were addressing specifically, we can delete those.
Yes, if you, if you, I think that you would want to only transmit the policies that are being deleted as-
That's what they're referencing. I just want to be sure we don't want to court with it.
Yes.
That's all. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we need to, we do need to take a straw vote, up or down, one way or the other. So if it's the pleasure of the board not to transmit, then we can make that motion as well. So if that's your intent, Commissioner Wollstall? I mean, I didn't support it last time, so.
Okay, it was, it was, I couldn't remember exactly. I thought you were involved in the no vote. But, so then, it's still, though, I mean, I wish, I guess I wish I had a parliamentarian here, because it's still, I just need a very clear yes or no. If it's, doesn't receive its transmittal votes, what happens to Objective Six?
It just goes away, like-
Entirely.
Yeah. My concern is that as a part of that package, there are these things that we had proposed to delete from the plan that are adopted today. And if you don't move those things that we're proposing to delete forward, they will remain in the plan. And I don't think that's really any of our intent, that that occur.
Again, though, I just asked, so if Goal Six, you said that if it doesn't get the upvotes, then it goes away, which means that we wouldn't even need to take a vote, a motion to not transmit. You could just move the transmittal. If you don't get five votes, then it dies completely, right? It gets removed from the comp plan?
It's my understanding on each one of these, we have to take a straw vote, up or down, and then we vote for resolution to transmit the ones that we approved. So.
Okay.
So what's the pledge, what's the pledge? Commissioner Miller? You're next in the queue.
I'm, I'm still not clear, even after what you said. And it appears, are you in the same?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, it looks like both of our attorneys that spoke in public comment look like they may have an opinion on this. Are we allowed to ask them?
Sure. I mean, obviously, they don't, they don't like it.
Am I right in reading? I think, I need some clarity. Because my whole thing is what happens to the deleted items if we don't transmit them? So.
Kami Corbett again for the record. Could they delete all of the language in Goal Six, deleting all of the policies contained in Goal Six, to result in the deletion of all of those policies that are in that goal? And transmit that to the state so it gets removed from the comprehensive plan? That's just a suggestion I had. Jake, I don't know if you had a separate suggestion, but that was what I was thinking. If you could delete all of the policies, just a clear strike-through of everything, that will delete, that will effectively delete all of those policies.
We're not going to spend all night on this, and it sounds like we're going to, we should transmit it and then take all the action, whatever we want to do, if we want to delete the whole thing or make any changes at that time. I voted against it last time, I'll vote against it tonight, but if it's going to cause more confusion, and if we can potentially improve it or delete additional items when it comes back, that might be the cleanest way to handle this. I think it probably is. Commissioner Cohen, did you want to make any comments?
I guess what I'm struggling with here is that it sounds like what you're saying is that there's part of this that is substantive, that it appears that the board does not want to move forward with. There's also part of it that's sort of ministerial, and that you would prefer it if that stuff could, could go ahead and be transmitted. In most cases, it's actually deletions of current language as opposed to adding something. Is that right?
Yes, we have a section that, again, starts on page 33 of the packet that says proposed deleted policies. And that would be great to delete those policies. You do, whatever you want to do with Goal Six, do with Goal Six.
So moving forward will allow us to delete policies that I think we all agree want to be deleted. Correct?
Okay.
If that's the case, then I suggest we transmit, and then we'll, we'll clean it out when it comes back. Commissioner Wollstall?
I will, as long as it's clear that in the adoption hearing, if there's no Goal Six.
That's what I'm-
All right, I will move for transmittal.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Wollstall, second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Commissioners, before we take up the next item, I did want to address one procedural issue. As I've made most of you aware, Goal One, Three, Five, Seven, and Eight are back on your agenda because Planning Commission staff missed statutory deadline to submit those to the state. But, which we're not happy that we did that, but it does present an opportunity for all of these goals to be adopted at the same time. When these two that you just have voted on transmittal come back from state review, we could adopt the entirety of the future land use element in one hearing, and that would be a lot simpler for the public and for staff, quite honestly, administratively, to make all the changes. So if it is the, I wanted to present the opportunity for the board to consider continuing B4 through B9 to a hearing date that I believe you have on September 17th. That would give us time to transmit these two goals that you just heard, get them back from the state review, and then have everything adopted at the same time. I wanted to bring it up now, so if anybody's here, they maybe didn't have to wait through all the other items for something that got continued.
And it's my understanding this is a much more efficient and coordinated approach to have them all at one time.
Yes.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Wollstall?
I was just going to make that motion for you, Mr. Chair.
Right. Continue B4 through B9 to September 17th? Is that the correct date?
Yes.
Still move.
All right, 6:00 PM. Got a motion, Commissioner Wollstall, second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
We're going to be here a lot this, that week.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, great. All right, next item.
Thank you. The next item is CPA 2423, the Local Functional Classification Map.
Good evening. Katrina Corcoran, Planning Commission Staff, here tonight to present on the Local Functional Classification Map Amendment. Some background on this request. It is publicly initiated. It is a text amendment for the adoption of a map, and although it is a text amendment, no policies will be changed as a part of this amendment. This was previously in the January 2023 cycle, and it was withdrawn due to SB 250, which prevented us from adopting amendments that were considered regulatory, and this map is considered regulatory. Since then, we are no longer in the purview of SB 250, and this amendment can go ahead and move forward. Some background on this map. The Mobility Section map series currently includes this map. It is Map 7. Again, the Local Functional Classification map. It's currently not adopted. The graphic that you see on the right was the previous version of the map from 2008, which was updated by Hillsborough County's Community and Infrastructure Planning Department in coordination with various stakeholders. So you may be wondering, what is functional classification? Functional classification of a road is a group of roads to which the road belongs. And when looking at functional classification, a list of typical roadway characteristics is considered, which includes posted speed, number of lanes, traffic generated, et cetera. The amount of mobility and access offered by different classifications varies based on type, and there are four main functional classes: principal arterial, arterial, collector, and local. Arterial roads generally provide the fastest method of travel but have the lowest accessibility from neighboring roads. They're designed for long-distance travel. And principal arterials include interstates and highways. Other arterials are considered minor arterials, and they have higher posted speeds. Collector roads are the second most common and are used as a connection between local roads and arterial roads. They have less mobility than arterials at lower speeds and for shorter distances, but they provide a balance between access and mobility. Finally, we have local roads. Those are the most common, but they're the slowest for travel. They're designed specifically to have high accessibility and to connect to collectors and arterial roads. And their speed limit is typically a bit less than collectors and arterials. A road's functional class can have an impact from a comprehensive plan or land development code standpoint. So this includes allowing or directing certain land uses to be located on certain types of roadways. So, for example, my colleague, Mr. Collins, talked about commercial locational criteria requirements. That's where this map comes in. Also, we sometimes encourage higher-density residential on certain types of roadways, so, for example, higher, higher-density residential on arterial roadways. With the land development code, there are considerations for transportation, safety, and access related to functional classification. This slide shows the proposed map. So this is map, currently Map 7. This amendment would adopt this map and rename it to Map 4, to be grouped with the other Mobility Section adopted maps, which are Maps 1 through 3. A minor clarifying edit for this, another adopted map, is noted in your packet. This amendment would also remove 2021 from the Mobility Section Map 3 title for context The Planning Commission received comments from the following agencies listed here on this slide. No objections were noted from Plant City, but some of these statewide arterials were noted showing not through their jurisdiction. So staff noted this, that there was an error with the PDF map that was sent. We remapped it to show those roads. Staff also made minor adjustments to a few roads in Plant City for the map. City of Temple Terrace and the Environmental Protection Commission and Hillsborough County Public Schools all had no comments. The Hillsborough County Departments all had no comments with the exception of Community and Infrastructure Planning, who support the amendment due to their department's work on the map, and the Office of Emergency Management, who said it aligns well with the current goals of the local mitigation strategy. Finally, we had a coordination meeting with the City of Tampa due to their ongoing update of their local functional classification maps, map. No formal comments were submitted. Community and Infrastructure Planning elected to change two roads, two arterials from collectors to match the city. That's West Shore from Gandy to Kennedy and West Shore from Kennedy to Boy Scout, but elected to leave Gandy from Heims to Bay Shore as a collector rather than a arterial. These are county-owned roadways within the city. Planning Commission staff recommends adoption of this map to reflect the recent update and regulatory use of the map. The update of the map is in line with the direction of future land use policy 12.4, which requires protection of interstate capacity through an adequate arterial and collector support system. Reviewing the current state of the roadway system ensures that staff have the most recent information to work with. Additionally, many policies within the county comprehensive plan refer to functional class and either restrict or direct certain land uses based on roadway types. This includes flu policies 12.3, 12.5, 16.5, 16.13, 22.11, 24.5, and 34.3, which are listed here on the slides. Some policies also make functional classification a requirement for bonus structures, such as the residential density bonus for infill development, which is flu policy 23.5. Finally, adopting the map fulfills the regulatory use of the map for standards for subdivisions, access management, and grid connectivity, which impacts the safety and mobility of the county's road users. That's related to flu policy 12.6 and mobility policies 4.1.1 and 4.1.3. The Planning Commission found HCCPA 2423 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. This is for you for your recommendation on transmittal, and this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't see anyone that has signed up, but this is a public hearing. What do you want to like to speak to this item? Okay, Commissioner Cohen?
I have a quick question. Just, I want to ask you to repeat something that you said. I want to make sure I got it correct. That Gandy Boulevard from Heims to Bay Shore is going to remain a collector rather than become an arterial?
Yes. So when we had a coordination meeting with the City of Tampa, they are also updating their local functional classification map, and in their map, they were classifying that as an arterial. Community and Infrastructure Planning, for the purposes of this map, decided to have that remain as a collector rather than moving it as an arterial to match.
Okay, good. I agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay, can we have a motion?
Moved.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Wollstall. Please accord your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, A4.
Okay, A4 is CPA 2424, the Palm River Progress Village Community Plan.
Sophia Garantiva, Planning Commission Staff, here to present on HCCPA 24-24, the Palm River Progress Village Community Plan, also known as the Greater Palm River Area Community Plan Update. This is a publicly initiated text amendment. The-
The community plan is part of the livable communities element of the comprehensive plan. The Board of County Commissioners asked staff back in September of 2022 to go ahead and update this community plan. And a little bit of background on the adopted plan itself, it was originally adopted back in 2008 as the Greater Palm River Area Community Plan. As you can see on the map, the boundaries generally include Palm River, Tampa Bypass Canal to the north, US Highway 301 to the east, Tampa City Limits to the west, and the limits of the River View Community Plan to the south. The community plan also includes multiple established neighborhoods such as Palm River, Clermont City, and Progress Village. The adopted community plan also established a vision, nine goals, and several strategies under those goals. The community plan update process kicked off in the fall/winter of 2022 with the presentation of a community plan implementation status report prepared by county staff and the request by the BOCC to initiate the update. We also started community engagement with open houses and began gathering data and coordinating with several county departments. Throughout 2023, we conducted community engagement and did so regularly with scheduled stakeholder meetings, drafted documents, and presented them to the community. We also had technical meetings with county staff. In 2024, we held the final community meetings, finalized draft, and initiated the comprehensive plan amendment process. These were just some of the numerous engagement opportunities that were open to the public during the process. We had open houses, online engagement via surveys, project website, virtual meetings. We had monthly office hours in the community. A monthly, excuse me, a community plan advisory committee, or CPAC, was also created. This was a voluntary group comprised of community members and stakeholders that provided input on draft policies, which also met monthly. We also put notices for community meetings. They were given through a combination of mailed postcards, emails, sign postings, social media posts, and were also advertised on the project website. Staff also attended events in the community to bring awareness to the effort and gather input. And some of these key insights we gathered from the engagement process were that there was a perceived opinion by the community that numerous adopted goals of their community plan and strategies were not fully implemented, such as code enforcement and infrastructure improvements. There was a fear that the area's history and sense of community was being lost due to new development and changing demographics. There does not appear to be outright opposition to development, but the desire for there to be balanced between new development and infrastructure demands in the area. There's also a desire for better communication within the community and with the community and the county. So from the input we received from the community and in collaboration with county staff, we are proposing four main changes to the adopted Greater Palm River Area Community Plan, the first and foremost being renaming the community plan to Palm River Progress Village. The proposed name includes the northernmost and southernmost neighborhoods of the plan boundary. Updating the community vision statement and concept map to include neighborhood names and reflect updates to the strategies and goals. The adopted and proposed concept maps are shown on the screen to the right. And also to help address some of the implementation concerns, we are proposing to combine related goals to focus efforts, going from nine adopted goals to five proposed goals and reprioritizing them. These are the proposed goals in order of priority. So create and maintain a safe and secure community, which includes strategies to continue to build a community where residents feel safe. The community identified this goal as the highest priority and includes strategies carried over from the adopted plan related to building relationships with the Sheriff's Office and Code Enforcement Department. Balancing the growth of the built environment, which includes strategies to balance growth and infrastructure demands such as prioritization of water and sewer expansion, transportation safety, and planning and land use strategies. Protect and maintain the natural and open spaces, includes strategies to aim to protect the natural environment and waterways, and support recreational opportunities. Foster community character and identity, includes strategies to build and maintain a sense of community and to address historic preservation. And last but not least, to support diverse economic growth, it recognizes Port of Tampa activities and also calls for supportive small businesses. The last main change is to clarify strategies, specifically by relocating action items in the adopted plan to a separate non-adopted report that will accompany the community plan. The non-adopted report is included in the hearing packet, and it lists these action items by community plan goal. For the consistency review, staff found that the proposed amendment is consistent with flu policies 18.1, mobility policy 1.1.1, capital improvement section policy 1.6.1, which supports public input in the community and transportation planning process, and also is consistent with recreation and open space policy 1.1.4 and future land use policy 27.1, as it promotes recreational and open space opportunities and public access and connectivity to natural and man-made amenities. Planning Commission found HCCPA 2424 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone like to speak to the item?
Commissioners, Jake Kramer, thank you for the opportunity. I just want to let you know, I'm oftentimes critical of these community plans. I think this is the way we should be doing them. Staff did a really good job. You probably saw, we used to have almost a cartoon graphic that sort of became a regulatory tool, and we, on the private sector side, never knew what was regulatory, what was the vision, what did the community actually want? And so they've done a great job, I think, of modernizing this plan into how we think about them today. So I want to commend them on that, and I have several developer clients that are looking at investing in this area. We think that this is the direction that the market is going in this area, so we, again, we think staff did a really good job on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Myers.
I'd just like to echo Jake's comment, but to you, Melissa, thank you when I brought this up a couple of years ago to look at this and see how we can work. And the community really came out and gave their input, and we worked so hard to make this happen, and just want to say to staff, thank you. I'm gonna move that, move for approval.
Yeah, we got a motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, at this time, we need a motion for a resolution for transmittal for CPA 2324, 2326, 2423, and 2424.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, now we'll go to the comprehensive plan text amendments. Adoption.
Yes, the first item is B1 CPA 2318, Rural Area Utilities Policies.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission Staff. This item was brought before you back in May. I'm here again for adoption. I'll have a much briefer presentation, but do want to highlight some of the things that were modified at your direction. Some background quickly, this is something that we developed with input and support from both EPC and Hillsborough County. EPC was instrumental in suggesting this and bringing this issue to our attention. This is a change to the One Water chapter, and the changes focus on addressing the adverse impacts of septic tanks, responding to unique circumstances that are in the public interest, and reorganizing and restructuring the section for clarity. I'm gonna go over the substantive changes very quickly. The first is to enable utility extension for documented environmental issue. Secondly, enabling extension to minimize new concentrations of septics in flood-prone areas, providing this board the ability to respond to unique circumstances that are overriding public interest and allowing properties that are adjacent to existing rural area lines to have service when subdividing. The other changes are adding in some requirements about the sizing of lines and capacity and technical feasibility, updates about lot sizes and community plan compatibility. For all of the changes proposed, the density and intensity is the same, whether it's on well and septic or water and wastewater. And then do want to highlight the changes that we made since transmittal. This board made a motion back in May to exclude the Keystone Odessa Community Plan area from the new components that were brought forward. So again, those are the, enabling the utility extension for documented environmental issues, that is excluded from Keystone Odessa. Also, the ability to extend to minimize new concentrations of septic, that is excluded. The other item that is excluded is the ability for the board to make exceptions. And then finally, subdividing on utilities adjacent to, or existing utilities is prohibiting Keystone Odessa. So we have made those edits to 4.3.4A, as well as added a new policy, 4.3.7, to speak to that exception. And then we have, we also received a request last time from you all to look at the sizing requirements and providing more opportunities for the board to weigh in. So we have created a separate exceptions process that is under 4.3.5A4, and that is intended to provide this board the opportunity to provide the exception for the sizing of lines if there is a coordinated request from the development community. The agency comments that we received last time are up on the screen. We also received comments that are in the packet from the Department of Commerce and the state agencies, there were no objections. This plan amendment is consistent with components of the One Water chapter, intergovernmental coordination section, and property rights element. I did go through those in detail at the transmittal hearing, there have been no changes. And your Planning Commission staff recommends the HCCPA 2318 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, what do you want to like to speak to this item?
Jake Kramer, again, I promise, this is my last time tonight. Here on behalf of Farm Bureau tonight, you probably recall, we had some comments, we were cautiously supportive of the last version of this. We think staff did a good job, struck the right balance. We appreciate them listening to us, and we ask for your support tonight on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Walstall. Oh, someone else. Please come forward.
Good evening, Melissa Nordbeck. Quickly, I just want to make sure the 4.3.5, the new addition, is also a Keystone opt-out. I don't see that anywhere. But it is a relief to the Keystone community to be excluded from this proposed amendment, but I am here to speak for the rural communities that do not have an active civic association or organized opposition. This amendment will allow developers to extend county utilities into the rural area, something they are not allowed to do now. If a developer must plant a subdivision with well and septic, they are limited on the number of houses they can build because of the required setbacks for well and septic, but if they can run a county utility line, they can build houses right next to each other and across the street from each other on much smaller lots. This amendment will allow developers to hook up an entire subdivision in a rural area to county utilities. Today, you are only allowed to hook up one address. This amendment will force rural residents to connect at their own expense to county utilities that are in their area. If your well or septic needs to be repaired or replaced, you will not be able to get a permit to do so. You will be required to hook up, and now you will have a monthly water bill. Voting down this amendment will also help protect rural communities from the Live Local Act. The loss of millions in tax revenue for the county on these projects would only be magnified by stressing infrastructure and public services already spread thin in rural areas. The reasoning behind this amendment is the narrative that septic tanks are harmful to the environment and that they have negative impacts, yet we have all just witnessed almost a million gallons of sewage spilled into our waterways from overburdened utility lines this week after Debbie. The true reason for this amendment is to work in conjunction with the future land use update to expand the urban service area. At the March BOCC meeting, the first of the comp plan amendments to expand the urban service area were heard, and the developers presenting those amendments were asking for over 2,000 acres in the rural area, and that was day one. These developers will not be required to do anything about the roads or the traffic, and overcrowded schools are not their problem either. High-density development does not belong in the rural area. The current One Water policy already addresses extenuating circumstances on residents that live near a utility line that want to connect, and making it easier to build subdivisions in the country is not what existing residents want. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Walstall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I did, I think I heard your staff say that the exception process was excluded from the Keystone area. I believe she said that.
Yes, I believe, but.
Yeah, if I did not, it was only because of brevity.
You did.
But yes, it is excluded.
Okay, you did say it. And I just was gonna say, I've supported Commissioner Hagan on the exclusion of Keystone in the past, and I will continue to do that through adoption. I've always found the utility thing kind of like, well, do we provide, do we provide trash services to many of those people in those areas? That's a utility. Does TECO provide electricity to many of those people in that area? That's a utility, and I'm just such a, it's just for me, creating these nuances and leaving out those, that's why I've always been like, the utility thing to me, and quarter mile, 300 feet. Are we gonna disapprove somebody who says we'll pay 100% to run a tube of water out to a school so the school doesn't have to be on septic to sewer? Those are all of the reasons that I would support it. And also, as far as the urban service area goes, we've made it very clear that it was always only supposed to be a goal to promote 80% growth inside that line, and we've achieved that goal. And I think that, I think that we've identified over 30,000 customers inside the urban service area plots of land. That's a low estimate. Could be on our utilities, but have, for whatever reason, chosen not to be, can't afford it, and eventually, I mean, along that I-4 corridor, I think that we've been pretty targeted on where we see that future growth, and I think that, I think that those are good initiatives. But again, I've supported Commissioner Hagan on the exclusion of Keystone in this, and I will continue to do so, and I will move for transmittal.
Second.
Oh, this is, this is actually to adopt. Yeah, this is.
I will move to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Appreciate staff's work on the, on the exclusions in Keystone. Okay, motion, Commissioner Walstall, Second Commissioner Myers. Know the comments, please accord your vote on B1.
I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kemp.
That's okay. I just want to make it clear that the reason that people within the urban service area can't even use the water and wastewater systems, it doesn't extend to them. We have 25,000 homes that are not served water or water and wastewater within the urban service area, so they don't even have that opportunity. So I'd just like to make that clear, and I mean, we'll never be able to pay the cost of doing this, and it will be put on everybody's water and wastewater bills, which so many people seem reluctant, other commissioners, to agree to those price increases that come with this service.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, please accord your vote.
No.
Motion carried six to one, Commissioner Kemp voted no.
All right, B2.
Yes, B2 is the new statutory requirements for wastewater planning.
Good evening, Commissioners. While the presentation's being pulled up, Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission Staff. This is another item that was transmitted to you all back in May. I'll be very brief with this item as well. It was developed in response to a new statutory requirement that came forward during the 2023 legislative session, requiring requirements for comprehensive plants and wastewater. Again, publicly-initiated text amendment to the One Water chapter to meet this new requirement, we've worked very closely with Hillsborough County Water Resources on this change, really want to thank them for their technical expertise and support. We have included the analysis as required by state statute as attachment B. One change since transmittal, we did receive a technical assistance comment from FDEP recommending that we adopt this by reference within the comprehensive plan, so we have made that change to reflect that comment. This is the proposed addition to the comprehensive plan. It is essentially mimicking the state statutory requirement where when there is a development of more than 50 residential lots, where there's more than one septic system per acre, the local government should consider the feasibility of providing wastewater service within a 10-year time period. There's a number of other technical considerations that need to be evaluated, and the analysis report that was conducted to meet this requirement is adopted by reference. Again, we received comments from the following agencies up on the screen. We also received the technical assistance comments from the Department of Commerce and DEP, no objections. This is consistent with the applicable comprehensive plan policies in the One Water chapter. These are the same that was provided to you at transmittal. There are no changes to this consistency finding. And your Planning Commission staff recommends the HCCPA 2401 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
This is a public hearing, anyone like to speak to this item?
Move adoption.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Walstall, please accord your vote on B2.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, B3. B3.
Yes, that's CPA 2404, which is the update to the public school facilities element.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Sophia Garantiva, Planning Commission staff, here to present on HCCPA 2404, the public school facilities element update. Again, just for review and a little bit of background on the element, this was a publicly initiated amendment. The public school facilities element is a part of the governance chapter of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. It's considered an optional element, but it is a tool used to ensure intergovernmental coordination on school planning. It does not allocate funding, impact curriculum, or other school board responsibilities. And again, this element was last revised back in 2016, and this is also part of the overall comprehensive plan update for the county and includes changes prompted by state legislation revisions and changes based on the revised interlocal agreement for school facilities planning, citing and concurrency, also known as the interlocal agreement. Planning Commission staff worked closely with school district staff on developing this language. And again, to review the proposed changes specifically to the intergovernmental coordination or policies related to intergovernmental coordination and the sharing of information per the revised interlocal agreement, policies outlining criteria for citing of schools and facilities, and also policies outlining concurrency review process and proportionate share process were modified to be consistent with state statutes. The level of service table was also modified to reflect updated school types per the revised interlocal agreement. There was also just an overall streaming of the language, streamlining of the language, removing duplicative policies, and also updating references to state statutes and the interlocal agreement sections. Again, this amendment was transmitted back in May of, May 9th of 2024, I apologize, and it was, again, transmitted to the Florida Department of Commerce on May 29th, 2024. We did not receive any objections from the reviewing agencies or the state. And again, the recommendation from the planning commission was that it found HCCPA 2404 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item?
Good evening again, Melissa Nordbeck. This was new to me. I don't have children, so I started looking at a lot of this language and started to break down, what is a mitigation credit? What does that mean? So as I was going through this policy, it sounds to me that if the developer is going to build a school to allow their development, they can create a mitigation bank in exchange for the right to sell capacity credits to other developers in the area so they can also keep building. Or they can establish an educational benefit district. And that is an alternative mechanism that allows for the sharing of construction costs that is necessary to accommodate new development. And sharing, or proportional, means the levying of a non-ad valorem assessment to the homeowners within the boundaries of the district to support the debt obligations associated with the construction of the school and to support the operating expenses of the district. So developers will be able to sell seats in the school that they have to build in order to get their development to other developers, and then the taxpayers and homeowners in that district will have to pay a tax that they never voted for because of a subdivision that they probably didn't want built next to them either. So again, this was new to me, but as I dig into this a little bit further, I find it pretty alarming. I don't know one parent or teacher that is even familiar with this policy, and I just wanted to shed some light on this, since I was going to be here anyway. But this mitigation term is a little bit more alarming and is not as vanilla as it sounds, and I wanted to point it out to you all tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Rostel?
Thank you. Well, I do want to hear more about that education zone fund thing, and I know that we can't impose fees on people that are already existing in a community for any reason. But we already do, the mitigation bank thing, Mr. Gormley, even just in rent, regular developments, that already happens, right? Can't they buy? And they can buy in a different county, I think, the way I understand it, on mitigation banks.
For, for.
For credits, right?
Sorry. There are several kinds of mitigation banks, and most, the ones that we see now are wetland mitigation banks. It creates a wetland, and credits can be bought to contribute to that. I don't believe we have any examples of mitigation credits with schools. The current regulate, we do have a concurrency regulation that ensures school capacity is available when development occurs. The way that those, in the event that a project is developing and there is a shortage of school capacity, the method that is used to, to address that in some cases is a proportionate share agreement between the developer and the school board, and that provides for a payment of basically a proportional share of their cost of capacity for that, for that project. So while there are other options that may be contemplated, what we see pretty much, I'd say exclusively, with capacity challenges, is the payment of a proportionate share. That payment goes to the school district, and the school district use that to fund new schools. Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not aware that there is a, any instances of developer mitigation banks being pursued with the school, school district here in Hillsborough County, at least.
Can you elaborate on that?
Sure, well.
Quickly.
Yes. My, what I, under the policies related to mitigation are existing in the plan today. They're not being proposed to change. It's my recollection that they were required by state statute as part of the concurrency process that mitigation alternatives be provided. So that's why they're there.
Okay, it's a state law. Okay. Thank you very much.
Motion to adopt.
Move for adoption.
Second.
I have a question.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes. The concurrency, all of that was put out the window by us and the state. So those, I've never heard of a mitigation bank for schools, and I really appreciate Ms. Nordbeck bringing that to our attention. And, I mean, have you, is there any example in Hillsborough County at all? The only time I've ever heard of a mitigation bank is the wetlands. Is there any other example of anything, we've heard it's never been used, any other example in Hillsborough County of any other mitigation? And because so, this has changed, I won't assume, can you tell us, is there a requirement somehow on state statute for this? Can one of our attorneys comment on that assumption?
We're not going to debate this all evening. If staff wants to provide an answer, please do immediately, and then we're going to continue. Does anyone have an answer?
Hello again, Sophia Garantiva, Planning Commission staff. I did want to point out that these are just the options for mitigation, they are not required. And again, I want to echo what Mrs. Ornida said, that these are required by the state to be listed in the comprehensive plan, but it is ultimately up to the school board to decide what mitigation strategy they choose.
Thank you. Okay, got a motion, a second. Please accord your vote.
No.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
Okay, that concludes the CPA public hearing, and then now we'll begin the Land Development Code Amendment public hearings. On the Board of County Commissioners, we'll hold two public hearings this evening to consider amendments to the Land Development Code. Now, Israel Monsanto will introduce the first item.
Good evening, Israel Monsanto Development Services. This is the second public hearing for LDC 240221. This text amendment is a companion item for the CPA 2318 that you just adopted. And again, the purpose of this publicly initiated amendment is to implement the rural area utilities policies proposed to the updated One Water Chapter of Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Under HCCPA 2318, the use of this regulation is adopted, only applies to those properties outside the urban service boundary, with the exception that these new policies will not apply to the Keystone or the SAC community plan area. Commissioners, compared to the first public hearing, there is no changes proposed. This is the same text that was presented to you in the June 6 hearing. Again, this would act criteria for connections to existing water utility line, or an existing wastewater line in the rural service area, consistent with the new comprehensive plan policies. There are, again, exceptions to the extension and connection criteria, will be considered in a limited cases of overriding public interest and subject to review and approval by the Board of County Commissioners in accordance with the Land Development Code, Part 100600. And finally, it also clarifies the definition from the Land Development Code for existing line connections. This concludes this presentation. We're available if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item?
Melissa Nordbeck again, and in the interest of time, same speech as last time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the pleasure of the board.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion for the adoption of the ordinance by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, the board now hold the first public hearing on LDC Amendment 24-1055. No vote will be taken by the board tonight. The board will hold a second public hearing on September 10th, 2024, to consider the adoption of this amendment. Israel, you going to introduce this item?
Yes. Good evening, Israel Monsanto Development Services. This is LDC 241055, Live Local Act, projects, criteria, and zoning requirements. This amendment will update the Live Local Act provisions recently adopted in the Land Development Code. The intent of this amendment is to modify and clarify the criteria and requirements for projects to qualify under the Live Local Act in the county. This amendment will specifically exempt land zone plan development, or PDS, for qualifying for Live Local Act projects. Land to be developed under this Live Local Act will be limited to parcels, zoning districts, business professional office, office residential, commercial neighborhood, commercial general, commercial intensive, and manufacturing. Additionally, the requirements for projects to qualify under the Live Local Act in the county are being modified to remove a specific criteria otherwise addressed by state law. The zoning requirements listed in the code, Section 60116, will be modified, making projects subject to the criteria set forth in both the Live Local Act section of our code and also the Live Local Act statute, as may be amended. This concludes my presentation, and we're available if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. I know we had a few individuals that have signed up to speak. Bill Zunnaman, I believe, and then Jim Johnson and Alexandria Anderson. Any of those folks here, please come forward. Don't be shy. Each person will be given three minutes.
Please hurry, there's a deal on Jim Johnson.
Okay, well, come forward, sir.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners. Jim Johnson, 19255 Hidden Oaks Drive, Brooksville, Florida. The LDC amendment now before the board, that excludes planned developments from eligibility under the Live Local Act, does not align with either the plain text or the legislative intent of the Live Local Act, which aims to provoke, promote the development of affordable housing and support local communities. My wife and I have had, for the past 20 years, a handful of rental properties providing workforce and affordable housing to residents of Gibsonton and Riverview. We most recently spent countless hours and tens of thousands of dollars from our own savings to bring back, bring forth a private-initiated affordable housing project to Gibsonton. This effort was formally recognized by the county's Affordable Housing Agency. During preparations for this effort, we researched the county's Land Development Code, the Comprehensive Plan, the Gibsonton Community Plan. I will share with you but a small sampling of what we uncovered. I quote, "The provision of affordable housing shall be given high priority consideration by Hillsborough County." And I quote, "Team with partners to develop both required and incentive-based actions to active workforce housing targets." And I quote, "Encourage provisions of affordable housing within mixed-use developments through public and private sector initiatives." So was our effort met with teaming or given high priority consideration? No. In fact, the opposite occurred. Our effort was met with skepticism, at times ghosting, the clear absence of encouragement and incentives, and definitely no partnering. My wife and I collectively and unaffectionately refer to the huge disparity between the county's actions versus its written policies, goals, and objectives as the big lie. From the top to the bottom, we discovered Hillsborough County as a culture and, in practice, an approach that does not, will not adequately address the needs of affordable housing, workforce housing for its residents, and especially where needed most in communities like Gibsonton. It is ironic that an act so railed against by some local politicians, both Democrats and Republicans, overwhelmingly passed with bipartisan support, 40 to nothing in the Senate and 103 to six in the House. State leaders on both sides of the aisle recognized and had the wisdom to address a particular root cause contributing to the lack of needed workforce and affordable housing in our state. That root cause is the temptation of local politicians to succumb to not-in-my-backyard NIMBY constituents. Our experience as conveyed is a prime example why the Live Local Act is so necessary, and especially here in Hillsborough County. And this amendment is but the latest effort by this board in the county to continue to the status quo and circumvent the Live Local Act. I have written comments for the middle.
Thank you, sir. We got Bill Zunnaman, Alexandria Anderson, and a Bobby Anderson. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have a statement to read for Ms. Alexandria Anderson, if that's okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. She was here earlier, had to leave, so. My name is Alexandria Anderson, 3229 Marcellus Circle, Tampa. I teach school in Hillsborough County, and she was present this evening, but had to leave. She was with two other teachers, Nora Pressia and Jamie Hernandez. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I want to address an issue that is before you this evening that is crucial, not only to our educators, but to the very fabric of our communities, attainable housing. Teachers are the backbone of our education system. We shape the future, inspire young minds, and build the foundation for a better society. Yet, despite our essential role, many educators are facing a pressing crisis, the lack of attainable housing. Our friend and teaching colleague is a hardworking, single mom who teaches in South Tampa. Even the older, rundown apartments in the South Tampa area are very expensive, so she commutes from Brandon every day, paying Selman Expressway tolls and burning through a couple hundred dollars a week with her car gas expenses and wasting precious time sitting in traffic. Sadly, even though she is dedicated to her job and loves this community, she's having to consider possibly moving to Ohio to live with her brother, the only family she has left. With her rent continuing to skyrocket here in Florida, she was paying $1,600 a month four years ago, and now that same apartment is $2,300 a month. It's just not sustainable. She already worked several jobs just to make ends meet and has to take her daughter with her because sitters cost too much. I have seen firsthand the financial and emotional stress this has caused her. Commissioners, attainable housing is not a luxury. It is a necessity for teachers to thrive. Stable and attainable housing allows teachers to focus on what truly matters, educating and inspiring the next generation. Investing in attainable housing for teachers helps attract and retain dedicated professionals in our schools. Attainable housing is not merely an option, but an essential support for teachers today, especially in this economy. By acknowledging this issue, you are making a commitment to improve the quality of education and support those who work tirelessly to shape our future. Let's work together to create solutions by allowing as many housing options as possible to be built in the communities where teachers work and ensure we have the stability and resources they need to succeed, so they, in turn, can help every student reach their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next. Good evening.
Good evening. Bobby Anderson, Alliance Residential. Just by way of background, I manage all new developments for Alliance Residential in Central and North Florida. We are the largest provider of workforce housing in the state of Florida. New workforce housing, I should say. I originally came here tonight to show you data that proves you have. I originally came here tonight to show you data that proves you have a housing and affordability crisis. However, I think most of you have probably already made up your mind on whether or not you have a housing crisis. So instead, I'd like to share my experience about working with Hillsborough County on one of the deals that is affected by what you're ruling on. A few months ago, we identified a property, Zonpd Commercial. The specific site has been vacant for nearly 40 years. We met with county staff multiple times to discuss this, and in fact, we received a verification letter stating that we were eligible for Live Local. It was only then I decided to spend $500,000 on plan design and submit them to you just to have them rejected. We can't continue to do business this way, is that if I'm burning through a half a million dollars and you're changing your mind in two and a half months, why would I come back and invest hundreds of millions of dollars into your community? The other part I want to talk to you about, and this is where I just don't understand. You talk about, you know, you're removing stuff that can be used for affordable and attainable housing. Well, I had my engineer team look at every undeveloped parcel in Hillsborough County that was five acres or larger and zoned for RMC 16 or greater. There is one vacant undeveloped parcel in Hillsborough County right now, and it is in the middle of the Hillsborough River and cannot be developed. So if we're removing more things that can actually bring, you know, this attainable housing and affordable housing, because this isn't just about attainable housing like the opt-out was, this is about affordable as well, is that if we can't find a property zoned, and if we can't get one zoned with this board, which has been hit or miss, how do we come and actually build anything you guys actually want? So it's for this that I'm saying that taking the existing property rights away from thousands of property owners in Hillsborough County is not in the best interest of our community in a time when housing options are critically needing. Accordingly, we are strongly opposed to this action and hope the county will continue to permit planned developments that are commercial, industrial, and mixed-use to be eligible for Live Local. The other thing I would throw out there before you guys make a vote on this is you really need to understand the Burt-Harris Act. You guys are in a very different position than some of the other counties that have opted out on PD, which, by the way, they have the Attorney General opinion. They are reviewing that to see if their policies still stand, so I suggest you call Orange County and some of the others that you're basing this policy off of as well. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Nicole McInnis with Sterns Weaver Miller. I have spent the majority of my time over the last year learning and working on the Live Local Act and learning about the state of Florida's incentives for affordable and workforce housing. From researching its original intent to how it's being implemented across the state by dozens and dozens of jurisdictions and how it was amended this past session. I understand that you, like many local governments, do not like this legislation. No local government likes it when they are preempted by the state, and I understand why you're upset about this. It seems drastic, and it affects the job that you do every day for this community. But how did we get here? Why did the legislature feel the need to step in and take this drastic measure? We got here because the demand for housing in Florida is so significant and it so exceeds the supply that we were never going to catch up, and this demand was only going to get worse. And they recognize that the demand that is created is most significantly affecting our essential workers. We got here because the state's affordable housing incentives typically only apply for 80% of area median income and below. So again, our essential workers are being forgotten when we're talking about housing that is cheaper than what is available at market but not typically considered affordable housing. And now Florida is facing this unprecedented affordable and attainable housing crisis for our middle-income workers. As a result, the Florida legislature stepped in and they enacted the Live Local Act. It is not intended to be a permanent solution. In fact, this portion of Live Local will expire in nine years. It is meant to be a quick and drastic response to increased workforce housing quickly in the market because the crisis grows worse every single day. The legislature looked at the number of people who are moving to Florida every day, which I'm sure all of you know, you see the headlines, the number of existing Floridians who already could not afford to live in their communities, and the number of essential workers who may be forced to leave their jobs to find a higher-paying career. I know that several of you ran campaigns or made remarks at BOCC meetings over the years with a promise to work on affordable and workforce housing for county residents to help county residents who are disadvantaged and to support our first responders and essential workers. This action you are considering today is not consistent with that direction. When I speak to local governments and critics of Live Local, my response is the same. If you do not like Live Local, what part will you play in solving the state's affordable housing crisis? The city of Sarasota, for example, adopted a code amendment to provide four times the maximum density allowed in their city, and only 15% of the units have to be affordable or workforce if the project is located in certain areas of the city. They took this response because they said, "We don't like Live Local. Developers will give you something better because we want to play our part." So my request for you is to please focus your attention on solution-oriented legislation rather than exacerbate the current housing strain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. My name is Joseph Myers. I come here tonight as a concerned citizen. I currently live in Pinellas County, but I work here in Hillsborough, and I've been looking to move closer to work, but unfortunately, I've found the cost of housing as a single professional to be prohibitive. I'm here this evening to urge the commission to vote against the motion to remove planned developments from eligibility for Live Local Act projects. I believe our community here in Tampa Bay will be best served by giving individuals and families the opportunity to live in the communities they work in, and the Live Local Act provides that opportunity. Having spent most of my career in the hospitality industry, I can tell you that the housing crunch is felt acutely by this demographic especially. Most hospitality workers do not make enough to live near the locations that they work in and must commute long distances, causing more traffic on the roads, a strain on infrastructure, and difficulty for many families in making ends meet. The Live Local Act is a great opportunity to create more housing to allow individuals to live in the communities that they work in, reduce that strain on infrastructure, and cut down on long commute times for everyone. Any foreclosure of avenues to build more housing under the Act will only serve to exacerbate the housing affordability crisis felt by so many individuals and families in our communities. I'm here to urge the commission to allow more housing to be built in Hillsborough County so that I and my peers can find places to live in the communities that we work in, giving us an opportunity to spend a reasonable amount of our income on housing, cut down on long commutes, saving our already overburdened roads and infrastructure. And for these reasons, I urge the commission to vote against the motion to remove planned developments from eligibility for Live Local Act projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Tori Boyd. I am an affordable housing developer. I have a project currently under construction in South Tampa right now. One thing we can all agree on at this point, that there is definitely a need for affordable housing in the Tampa Bay area. I'm here to voice my opposition to the county's proposed plan to exclude planned development from the state's Live Local Act. This is a significant amount of acres that will be given or utilized. Exclusion is not the solution to the problem right now. That will only make it more difficult for our community to move towards solving the current housing crisis. Rents have jumped by more than 50% in the last, in the, rents have jumped to more than 50%, the fourth highest increase in the nation. We already can't meet the current demand for housing, and now we are proposing to tighten the inventory even further. With hundreds and thousands more moving to the area, we need a plan to provide quality attainable workforce housing for all of our residents. Fostering an attractive and resilient community means making tough choices around smart growth, but those decisions should be made in collaboration with developers and landowners in order to implement solutions that work. I ask that you vote to deny the efforts of the restricted rights of property owners and instead help be a solution to the affordable housing crisis, not another part of the problem. I thank you for listening and taking this under consideration.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, good evening. My name is Leila Hayavi, and I am a resident of South County. I'm also an affordable housing professional. I've been in affordable housing for over 20 years. I also serve on the Housing Leadership Council of Tampa Bay as a board member. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight about the housing crisis and specifically to address the needs in the county that are by far not at all being met. I've worked in the affordable housing space for nearly two decades. Three of those years, we're actually here at Hillsborough County in the Affordable Housing Services Department. We definitely need more affordable housing, not less. We need more attainable homeownership units, not less. This proposal seems to eliminate a tool from the toolbox. I understand that county staff have recommended approval of this amendment, but I would like to gain a little bit more clarity as to specifically why county staff believes that this needs to be codified. So I'm asking for specific details from the county staff to let us know why is it that this is necessary? Generally speaking, we should be working with developers to provide more units of affordable housing, so why remove a viable option that could definitely provide housing for the missing middle? If we're going to address the housing crisis, we have to work with developers to create homeownership opportunities. We need to expand accessible housing options in the Tampa area, working with the private sector, not taking steps backwards. So instead of restricting the building of more attainable housing, we should be embracing the opportunities that are available under the Live Local Act to build more workforce housing. Reducing the inventory of available apartments will negatively impact our ability to meet our community's needs, which are more critical now than ever before, as you've heard from the previous speakers. So I'm asking for further clarity on the reasons that the county staff believe this amendment needs to be codified, and what legitimate concerns staff have to remove this viable tool from the toolbox. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Allison Hewitt, and I'm a resident of Tampa and also a board member of the Housing Leadership Council of Tampa Bay. And I want to speak to you about this limiting the options for affordable housing, attainable housing here in Hillsborough County. And as you know, the demand for housing here is far outstrips the supply, and the cost of living is soaring, so many of our residents are struggling, living paycheck to paycheck. I think even you may have seen on the news that is reported that a single adult to live comfortably must make $94,432, and that's just a single adult, and that's not with family. And so you also are probably aware that the AMI in Tampa is at $92,000. We are very lucky that we are flourishing here in Tampa and Hillsborough County, but that still does not address the working poor, as well as those folks who are just starting out as firefighters and teachers and things of that nature. And so I don't know of all these zoning issues here, but most of them that were described are busy corridors, commercial corridors. They are not the ones that are going to be for someone who's trying to raise a family or trying to start a family. And so we are asking you to not limit your options to just these corridors here, which are usually busy or commercial or mixed-use commercial, but that you make attainable housing much more open to yourself. I know it to have the home rule just thrown out of the window and have Tallahassee become to try to manage you, but what I see here is an opportunity. So if you keep it open, you still have the ability to vote yes or no on someone that's proposed to use this land for building attainable housing here in Hillsborough County. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Next. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gregory Short. I'm currently a resident here in Hillsborough County. I come before the board today to urge you all to vote against this amendment to exclude planned developments from the Live Local Act. Now, I have two main reasons why this board should vote against this amendment. First, the Live Local Act makes economic sense. Attainable housing allows for more disposable income to be spent on goods and services, generating tax revenue that flows back into local governments, back into this board, and back into the community. And second, the Live Local Act secures a future for the next generation of Floridians who will require a variety of housing options and accommodate their busy lives and schedules. Now, my first point is that the Live Local Act makes sense economically. Affordable, the affordable housing crisis here in Florida is causing people to spend a disproportionate amount of their income on housing and rent. Now, increasing the supply of housing reduces the cost of living, allowing Floridians to spend more on goods and services, the things that they want to spend their income on. Now, this increased spending is good for economic development and business owners in the community. It helps generate jobs and flows back into local businesses, small businesses. Now, more spending on goods and services generates tax revenue that benefits local governments, comes back into this board, and flows back into Hillsborough County. Thus, the Live Local Act gives the opportunity for our hard-earned tax dollars to better support our community. Moving to my next point, the Live Local Act secures a future for the next generation of Floridians. As our population inevitably grows, the next generation of middle-income earners are going to require a variety of housing options to meet their busy schedules. Multi-family apartment complexes developed under the Live Local Act help reduce commute times and ensure that our workforce have the stability that they need to be the backbone of our state. Now, embracing this legislation enables this next generation to build their lives, their careers, support their families, and the community here in Hillsborough County. Now, supporting the Live Local Act is an investment in the next generation of Floridians, and thus we need to invest in this community and allow it to thrive with, ripe with economic opportunities. Now, for these reasons, I urge this board to vote against this motion. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next. Good evening.
Good evening, Elise Batzel for the record. First, I hope each of you got my letter and the new Attorney General opinion that was issued on July 12. I just wanted to note a couple of things for you. When you voted to bring this item back before the board, you felt comfortable, based on the discussion between Commissioner Wastle and Adam, that the Orange County opinion stating that you could look at a zoning district without looking at the uses underlying that district was a defensible position, but this new informal AG opinion says otherwise, that that position is not defensible. You cannot circumvent the Live Local Act by specifically exempting planned developments from consideration and eligibility. That violates the legislature's clear preemption. I've heard the county attorney's office and Adam on a number of occasions talk about, well, lots of jurisdictions are excluding PDs, but here's what's really important. Hillsborough County is different than all of those other jurisdictions. It's different because you said planned developments were eligible. You codified that in your land development code. You created rights. You created entitlements for all of those people, and now you're going to vote to take away those rights. That's different than anywhere else in the state. We don't know of any other jurisdiction that has done that. And before you vote on this matter, there are a couple other things that you need to take into consideration. Commissioner Wastle asked at the last hearing, how many properties does this affect? Have we done that research? And I understand that that hasn't been done. So I had our team do that analysis between the last hearing and now. We mapped out every PD in the community. There's 2,856 planned developments within Hillsborough County. We then had a team of our attorneys look at each and every approved planned development PD site plan to determine conservatively if they were eligible for the Live Local Act. So if we thought they, there was a question, we threw them out. There's a minimum of 1,006, 1,061 planned developments in your own community that are eligible. That's 54,000, over 54,000 acres of property that today are eligible. Those property owners all have rights today, and you are considering taking those away from all of those property owners. Reversing the course has huge implications from a significant legal perspective and a significant cost perspective for the county. I can tell you that our team did that legal analysis as well. And the only people that will win if you vote to eliminate the planned developments are the lawyers. They're the only ones that are going to benefit. And finally, I'd ask you to consider this. What you're considering is very similar and really no different if you took 1,061 properties throughout the county and decided to downzone them, right? They have rights today. They can develop doing certain things today, and now you're going to change your position and eliminate those rights. I'm confident that you'll make the right decision.
Thank you. And Eric Garduno had signed up virtually. Is he still on the line?
Eric is not on the line.
I'm sorry?
Eric is not on the line.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak to the item? Okay, please come forward.
Good evening, Melissa Nordbeck, and thank you, Commissioners, for adopting this new language to protect Hillsborough County from preemptive legislation coming out of Tallahassee. And boy, is the importance of vested rights more magnified than ever on this issue. And boy, is the importance of vested rights more magnified than ever on this issue. There might be PDs out there with site plans, but again, we have a vested rights policy that if followed properly, will show if those actual property owners are vested before we get into a property rights issue. The opt-out provision approved at the last public hearing and now the exclusion of PD zonings will go a long way toward retaining local control over zoning and development decisions. And I would actually like you to consider additional language regarding variances or modifications. Any project requiring a variance or otherwise not able to comply with the applicable development standards and comprehensive plan provisions will not qualify under this process and must comply with the applicable conventional developmental approval processes. The addition of this clause would make clear that a developer would not have the ability to qualify for a live local project and then, as the process unfolds, makes repeated requests for administratively-approved variances or modifications. This would save time and money and eliminate applications that are submitted under false pretenses. Again, before we get into being scared about property rights, really take a look at the county's vested rights procedure. It is a living, breathing document, and if followed properly, this will not become an issue. Thank you again for your vigilance.
Okay, we'll go into board comments now. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. I want to thank everybody that spoke tonight. This was a very illuminating discussion. You know, there is an awful lot that I don't and I don't think this board likes about Live Local. But some of the issues that were raised tonight are definitely worthy of further analysis. And I am particularly concerned about the Burt-Harris issues that have been raised. I know there's a difference of opinion between some of the lawyers that spoke and between our county attorney on that, but I'm going to look forward to learning more about that in the coming days. So that brings me to my question. We're not voting tonight. When are we actually voting on this?
Commissioner, the second public hearing will be scheduled for September 10th as part of the land use meeting.
As part of September 10th?
Yes.
So, you know, I think it behooves all of us to do some analysis on some of the issues that were raised here tonight, but also recognize what brought us here to begin with, which was our, you know, consternation at losing our ability to control our own future development and losing that to one-size-fits-all rules that made at the state level. So, you know, I'm sure there'll be more from others to say, but I think that all of us are going to need some help from the staff in the next month to get through some of what's been raised.
Commissioner Wastle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to encourage some of my colleagues. There was a lot of pressures, allegations, borderline fear-mongering, a lot of self-interested folks, either property rights or those that look to make extreme personal profits off of being able to utilize a law that has already been amended in its first year. I've already been given many guarantees that it is going to be amended again. I know because I've been personally asked by the legislature to help with that. I know that this is how the sausage is made. Laws get written and changed all the time. I'm going to go ahead and ask Attorney Clark... Sorry, I usually just call you Cameron instead of your last name there. To speak to, since it is one attorney that sent us a semi-threatening email, if you want to just elaborate on that, as everybody knows in the room, I have bled your ears about property rights. I in no way interpret anything that we're doing as a violation of anyone's property rights. It's like suggesting now that after the state goes in, after they made changes the first year and they're absolutely going to make changes again next year, that when they change that law, that they've somehow committed property rights on over 54,000 acres of land in Hillsborough County. That's just extremely far from the truth, in my opinion. So if you would like to just quickly elaborate on that?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. So I've looked at the Attorney General opinion, and to be clear, there's two Attorney General opinions on this. There's one, we'll say, the July of '23 opinion, which is the one that very clearly indicates that the opinion from the AG's office, which again, these are just opinions. These aren't binding or controlling anyone. These are just opinions from the AG's office. There is no case law on Live Local yet. It's been in effect for a year. There's a few circuit cases out there. I believe most of them have settled so far, so therefore, there's no appellate opinion on this. The legislature hasn't clarified this issue. There was a House bill, I think, that would have stated that it's applicable in PDs, but it did not pass the legislature. So at this point, it's really interpretive. The July of '24, the last month's AG opinion, is in response to a city of Orlando zoning district called MXD2, which is a mixed residential office district. It's a standard zoning district. It's not a PD. So it's not exactly apples and apples. Essentially, the AG's office is saying is that you can't camouflage what a district really is by renaming it essentially. But I think the issue regarding Burt-Harris is if Live Local applies to PDs, it does or it doesn't. The county is not depriving a right. It's really interpreting what the statute says. So if there's some sort of judicial opinion or even some legislative action that clarifies that it applies to PDs, obviously, all jurisdictions in the state are going to have to comply with that. At this point, most of the jurisdictions we've seen, such as Tampa and Pasco County, among others, have interpreted to read that it does not apply to planned developments. And so, like I said, we just respectfully disagree with the conclusions Ms. Batzel reached in her letter, but if you have any more questions, I'm happy to take them.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, just because that was a pretty big reach and thing to come up to the dais and say and insinuate that we're trying to violate the property rights of 54,000 acres of property in Hillsborough County. And as we've had discussions before, Mr. Gormly, in the past, we have never superseded the height requirements restrictions that are in there, the mixed use, the commercial requirements that allow them. But it does go further in SB 101 to say that we can't do anything about those, but it does not exempt them from other requirements that may or may not exist in the county. And a lot of these places that were... A lot of these locations that were listed do not meet the other requirements that are listed clearly in our comprehensive plan. When you cherry pick some of the comprehensive plan about what we say about affordable housing, you can't leave out those other ones that are requirements, such as transportation, transit corridors. So I'll just, since we're not voting today, thank you.
I do think that's excellent comments from Commissioner Wastle. He brought up some great points. Okay, so no actions any of the evening. We'll take up this hearing now. Okay, Commissioner Kemp, your final speaker.
Thank you. I'll just say, I have been extremely supportive, as the board knows and I think many, much of the public, for supporting affordable housing, attainable housing in Hillsborough County. I've worked for it in all of my eight years. The Live Local Act is not that. It is really not about affordable, attainable housing at all. I think it's, you know, it's upper income limit of 120% of the AMI. That's the average median income. You can earn 120% of that, and they're calling that affordable and attainable housing. The average median income in Hillsborough County is $59,893, last time I checked, and 120% of that is greater. This is not... This does not provide housing for the people that need it. It doesn't address affordable, attainable housing. It is far above that because all that's getting built under this is 120% of the average median income. I'd also like to say, I always instinctively believe that to be true, but then I saw the Schimberg Report on housing, which says that there's no need for any more housing in Hillsborough County at 120%. That need is satisfied. The only two counties in the state that have an issue with that, and it makes total sense, is Miami-Dade and Broward. We do not have that issue. We need housing that is serving the average median income or below that, the 80%, the 100% is where the need is, and that... This doesn't address it at all. So I am totally in support of us taking this action because I'd really... I'd like to address really true affordable housing needs, and this doesn't do it.
Okay. Next hearing will be on September 10th?
Yes, sir.
And with that, we adjourn.